Okay. She explained to Katie Myers that unfortunately our representative stated that there was a couple living already on B2R, that who is recently moving to the, you know, moving to the unit in April or March. And the occupancy for that particular unit, it was only two adults. If everyone just wasn't gonna be approved, okay. And then later the day or next day, we learned that, oh, by the way, this couple are no longer living there. How come they just moved only for a couple months and they move out? Alright, so now we learn that after two months of renting this unit, the, the unit is, becomes vacant. Alright. So now, we have another application received on June 8th by Doug's ex-wife Fabiana Myers as the least, as the main lease applicant. I need you to please proceed to page number two of the application, ladies and gentlemen. Our condo docs states that for somebody to be a permanent occupant must be listed on the application. And that person is not listed. Carla. So Fabiana is presented her documentations, the application, the pay stuff and everything that is required, the lease contract. In addition to that, we receive a permanent occupant application for Carla Fleckler. Okay? Meanwhile, while I'm reviewing Carla Fleckler's permanent occupant application, I noticed that she has a salary of $5,000. So here's my question. Why if this individual has a salary of $5,000 a month, she doesn't really need Fabiana Myers to co-sign, okay? We have another problem.
$5,000 a month?
That's what, you look at the permanent occupant application for the Carla Fleckler.
Where it says on the first page, $5,000.
Anyway, so I, this was brought to the attention of the, of the president, the committee members. A couple members of the, of the committee declined this application because to me it's just like plain and simple red flag.
What happened actually is that they referred it to the board because they felt like it was just a really an insult to, to the-
In addition to that, I haven't even finished. Mr. Myers, or whoever refused to again, I'd like to show with proof. Refused to authorize the application simply because he claims that he has twenty-something units and he doesn't have to authorize from now on. If his application is unauthorized, will be declined. Because this is enough reason to decline an application. It is incomplete, plain and simple. Also, our warranty docs clearly states if there's some type of falsification, okay, on the docs, that's another good reason to decline an application.
I see that the notary on, on one of them
Oh, it's his ex-wife.
Is Katrina Myers and she's notarizing for Fabiana Myers. Isn't that, isn't that illegal? That's, that's, you're not allowed to notarize for your family.
If Fabian, okay.
But she's his ex-wife.
Okay, in this case, I need to know whose-
So it's, apparently it's legal because they're not related anymore, okay?
There, this, this is legal because they're not related. First of all, I need to find out whose unit is under this, uh, uh-
But here's the interesting thing is that Fabiana Myers is listed as an owner in at least one unit in International Village. So, so she's now applying as a tenant for another unit owned by Doug Myers to be a roommate for somebody in a room and to be, to be somebody's roommate in a studio. So she's an owner, but instead of living in her unit that she has title to, she's going, she's applying to be a tenant in one of Doug Myers' studios to live with a roommate.
And you don't, they basically, he's doing this to have this Carla Fleckler to be renting the unit for a while.
Essentially, what you're saying is that the reason for this is, is in order, in order to circumvent our income requirements for the tenant which need, who needs to make a certain salary, he's using Fabiana Myers' salary even though we don't really think that she-
Let me, let me stop for a moment. For Carla, since she presented the income, did she ever submit an income based off, no bank statement, zero, or nothing?
This is Doug Myers' unit, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
He purchased a long time ago. He purchased a long time ago. Right.
No, we do have, we, we do have sales and lease rules and regulations and they, they need to be approved by the sales and lease committee and the board and they need to be certain requirements.
So in other words, his ex-wife, because Carla couldn't afford the apartment, she was going to be responsible-
The co-signer, if you-
Not just the co-signer, but she's listed as the actual tenant.
Right. In fact, he failed to put her, to, I mean, Fabiana failed to put on her, on her lease application who was gonna be the permanent occupants.
Alright.
And for things like this, an application can be, can just simply be declined.
Alright, I don't think we should waste any more time with Doug Myers. So if it, if it is not notarized, if she doesn't meet the legal bylaws, this is not even a question. Don't, don't waste her. I make a motion to reject if it doesn't meet the bylaws, as explained.
It is incomplete.
But just not if, there can't be an if in a motion.
No, it's a motion to decline because application is incomplete.
Alright, a motion to decline, the, the incomplete application.
That's what I'm like, so this point gonna put on the decline.
Is there, is there a second to the decline motion? Marat seconds it and makes sure the decla, decla, I mean, social, make sure, make sure the decla, declination letter explains the reasons because I believe that is the requirement.
Always, when we decline, somebody, I have to make, make sure they use the language from the condo docs. That's why we are declining the person.
Alright, so, so we don't waste any more time with this. Because he's just gonna reapply and notarize and we're gonna be on the same spot from now. Is there another reason, like, can you tell me why is being declined?
Can we just say any reason, any, any valid legal reason that, you know, whatever valid-
Because he's just gonna notarize that and come back the next month for the same thing. So should it be approved or should it be denied? What is the reason of the denial? That's my question.
Well, first of all,
how many times can you rent in a twelve-month period?
So i- if you like, right now we'll leave it at incomplete, but
If, if he's declined, then he has, he has to wait for three, you know, three months to resume the, the same, with the same person.
Can, can I, can I ask?
I mean, couldn't the reason be that the, the person listed as tenant is not really the intended tenant? She has a nice, you know, house living, she's living on the beach, I understand, in a nice beach, beachfront condo.
I recommend that the, the committee, I think I'm gonna give you really my message that to have an affidavit from Mrs. Myers, Fabiana Myers, that she was gonna be leaving in the, I don't-
That's a good idea.
Unauthorized affidavit, I will be leaving in the premises, not just showing and anything, because I can go to the emergency department, right, and lie about me, oh, I live in, in, in International Village, when in reality I live in Aventura, right? So anybody can land, but I need, you know, I requested to see an affidavit. To prove that she's gonna be indeed a legal tenant.
Alright, so we have a discussion on the board regards to that. Anybody wanna discuss on the board? Anybody in the membership? Yes, Marci.
If Carla wants, Carla wants to rent the apartment, then just go ahead and get it notarized the proper way and just get it.
The problem is she doesn't meet the, the income requirements, that's, that's-
Again, we don't even know because she didn't ask me that Carla did not, she said that she makes $5,000 on her application. Alright. She's making the money, why she's not proven? Thank you very much. We should, for permanent occupants, we don't require income.
We need to move on, it's getting late. So it's, there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any objection on the board? Hearing none, the declination passes. Okay, now the, the unit is not, the lease application is not approved. Next item is Edelweiss fire mitigation.
Right. I receive, let me just move really quick. This is for unit E to J, okay? The first proposal is for the windows. This is for the Carlos Castro's unit that went and fired back in April 22nd. The installation for the, all the windows is gonna be $11,728.46. We have to give an initial deposit of $5,864 with 23 cents. This money is coming out of the insurance. Per city code, they have to be hurricane-impacted windows.
He did not have hurricane windows before.
It does, it doesn't matter. He needs to install hurricane windows per city code.
So we have to pay extra for his, it was not hurricane windows that he had.
It doesn't matter.
But it's a, it's an insurance issue, correct?
It's an, it's an insurance issue.
Permanent and insurance.
Permanent issue, this is city code.
Okay, the city code, right.
And there's something that we can do. We have to go by law because-
Insurance is going to cover this?
Right, it's coming from the insurance.
Okay. After, right? We're being reimbursed after, correct? We just have to spend the money and then get it back?
And then we're gonna get reimbursed, exactly, okay? Because we have to do this, okay? Hurricane season, the rain is coming, his place has to be fixed, okay? For, the second proposal is for the contractor, the Alpha and Omega contractors. There, this is a company that is responsible for removing the drywalls and cleaning up the place and repairing the place because it's just full of smoke and black stuff all over the place. The total price for the reconstruction of the unit is $19,138. We're gonna give, it's gonna be three payments. They request 30% down payment of $5,741.40.
$19,000.
I have a question.
For the drywall?
I have a question.
Not only the drywall, it has electrical, there's a lot of gorgeous stuff that they need to do to bring it up to code.
Is International Village responsible to replace wall coverings?
Yes, sir.
No, we are not. I, I just read the, I read the docs.
Yes, we have to.
I read the docs.
Make sure that you reread the docs.
I, I just read the docs.
We're responsible for the walls.
Trust me, I have an insurance company.
Okay, okay, there's a big difference between being responsible for the wall or for the wall coverings. We are not responsible for wall coverings.
What, what do you mean by wall coverings?
No, drywall, it's a wall covering. We're responsible for the structural wall. We are not responsible for drywall.
Yes, we are.
Alright, let's check on that because that's a big difference.
I, trust me, I contacted Alan Adams, our insurance agent, and we have to pay for the, for the walls.
Okay, there's a big difference when you say walls or wall coverings.
The drywall. For example, drywall. Drywall. When we have to fix something in the units, they remove the drywall, they have, we have responsible for replacing.
Like I seen the issue that the association had to replace plumbing in a unit and they damaged the tile. But then the association only fixed the concrete and they never replaced the tile on the person's unit. And the person was like, well, you broke the tile to get to the plumbing, we are not responsible for the floor covering.
Between the walls. The buildings and the walls belong to the association and therefore becomes the responsibility of the association to maintain or replace in the event of a fire. What's on the floor covering, you know, maybe somebody unboards it, I don't wanna do it because they're just being arbitrary and they know they can't. But in reality, all you own in your deed is the air. And your rights as a your right, your rights end where your neighbor's nose begins. As soon as you open the door and step into the common areas, you don't own it, you share it.
Now, let me just also point out to you that these proposals were sent out to the insurance carrier before I even presented to the president for approval into the board for approval. Okay, first things first, I need to make sure that the insurance will guide me as well.
Are we gonna get 100% of this from the insurance company?
We are hoping that we're gonna get 100% because because we get a $10,000 deductible from the insurance so far.
The, the, okay, the $10,000, we already went over that deductible, correct, for this particular project or what?
Forty thousand.
Yeah.
So all of this, this particular item is gonna be 100% covered because we already met the deductible? Is that what you're saying?
In other words, we, we receive a check for $9,000.
No, what I'm saying is that this, this item we're approving today, if we approve it, will we get all that money back? The, what is it, what's the total here? What is the total?
It's gonna be
Nineteen, what is it?
Nineteen.
$19,138.
Plus eleven.
Are we gonna get?
Twenty. Because as a windows, we have, you have to-
Is it gonna be 100%?
I can answer that question. I need to contact Alan about this.
No, I'm not comfortable if, um, I'm not comfortable approving it if we don't know.
If we're not approved, you know, who's gonna pay for it? We, this association have the responsibility to cover for these expenses and there's no question.
Could you please find out as soon as possible from Alan and send us, send the board an email? So the total here tonight is what? Now, give us the total figure. Does it drop down to 30,000? Okay, so we need a motion to approve the $11,728.46 plus nineteen. Alright, I make a motion to approve as presented the the proposal from Alpha Omega Contractors. And also Alpha Windows and Doors as presented.
Marci, or can they not get somebody that's less money to do that instead of Alpha? I mean, $19,000.
We, Marci, I'll tell you something. We called several companies.
I'll second that motion.
How much are you getting back from the insurance company?
Nine thousand, $9,700. $9,700.
How much are we getting back for this?
Oh, I don't know, I need to, Alan is working on it.
Okay.
Alan, Alan is, he's still working on getting us more money on this.
Okay, good. So there's been a motion made by Marci, actually, who seconds it?
You did.
But there was a question as to whether I could second, so that's why I'm asking. Until we can check that out with Robin's rules of orders, let's make somebody else second it. Marat, would you like to second it? Alright, we need to fix it anyway. Is there any, any more discussion, any objection on the board?
I have a question. I'd like to hear what we're asked to say.
Yes, George, could you address this?
What's your opinion, Laurie, on this?
My opinion is, we should not give you the money, we have to lose the $10,000.
Deductible.
Deductible. We spent forty, we go, we, they give you thirty and we lost ten dollars.
We have to observe the, the cost.
Ten dollars we gonna lose.
Okay.
Where is he living now?
No, that's another question.
Where is he living now?
Thank you, Laurie, that's, that's irrelevant, go ahead.
It's not irrelevant. You're paying more money for letting him live for nothing. That makes no sense. That's better than irrelevant.
Let's find out, let's find out and get back in the conversation. Alright, so if there's no objection, it's approved. The next item is, I'm sorry, was it, we already proved it, we already proved it.
When my place was damaged the first time, I mean, this is like eight times in eleven years. I had to pay, the association gave me $1,000, but I, out of my own pocket, I paid $6,000 to fix my place again. Then I put carpet, I lost it, I paid again. The insurance paid twice and the insurance says, no more. We're gonna quit, stop you, and I didn't wanna lose my insurance. So I start paying these things by myself. And this time, I'm saying I'm not gonna do it. I'm gonna hire somebody to come and do the work and I'm gonna hit the bell. Because if it can be done for somebody else, why not for me?
The, the next item is, the next item is washers and units. This item was tabled last two meetings because we went long.
What happened to the other apartment that had a fire?
That, that was, that was last month. We, we voted on that. No, we didn't make the deductible on that one.
We didn't make the deductible.
And that didn't have much damage.
Yeah, it was my, relatively.
No, no.
It not had too much damage, it's only the kitchen area that's the only little smoke.
Okay, the next item is washers and units. This item has been tabled last couple of meetings because of the fact that we went kinda long on that. This is the third time it's on the agenda. The issue here is that our docs prohibit washers and individual washing machines in units, but we do have, how many is it, social? Approximately fifty-two, fifty-two washers and dryers. The dryers aren't an issue because the owner pays for the electricity. However, the washer, of course, that's a common expense, we all pay the water bill. So the question is what to do about this particular item? Do we send letters? Now, one issue that somebody brought up is that some, some units apparently are grandfathered in because the washers were placed in the unit, installed in the unit prior to the time that we became an association. Maybe there were some upgraded. Right, that's, that's the question, it's like, are they, are they grandfathered in if they were replaced? Or if they were upgraded, is that still grandfathered in? That's the question. So, but what, what we need to do is decide how to deal with this issue. Should we deal with it tonight or should we table it again? But I, I just wanted to, there was an owner who actually had some suggestions that I thought were good. That he emailed me these suggestions that are related to this item and would at least perhaps stop the bleeding. So if you would allow me to read these suggestions that I received in an email. The first suggestion was that trucks from major appliance dealers should be checked for washing machines when entering. And because apparently sometimes these wash, new washers are delivered and they're not stopped. The guards, he says, have apparently not been trained to keep an eye out for these deliveries. So that's something we should take a look at. Now, the other issue is that new plumbing has to be installed to put in a washing machine, I believe that's true. Plumbing contractors doing business in the village need to be advised that these installations are illegal, meaning the washer, the washing machine installations, and that they could be banned from doing business here in the future in the event of such a violation. I think that's also a good suggestion for plumbers. I will. Most important, he says, employees must be trained to keep an eye out for washing machines coming in because not all washers, or not all washers are delivered by major appliance dealers. Security, maintenance, and housekeeping must be trained by their supervisors. He says, a few months ago, he saw a washer being delivered to the interlocking building and it was being delivered to a second or third floor unit and the elevator had not even been padded, that's an issue. He point this, pointed it out to a passing guard on a golf cart and his response was, it isn't our business. That's a big problem if that, if that happened. So clearly our security needs to be overhauled. Anyway, since so many owners live out of the area, he says, he suggests that a letter should be sent to all owners advising them that they will be fined for the actions of their tenants if they in fact try to install illegal machines. So I think, I think that's, that's, those are good suggestions that we should implement. I'm not sure if a motion is required, I think this is more administrative than it is. But what we do need a motion on is what to do about the ones that are already here. Because, because one thing that I, I noticed is, yeah. One of our biggest expense items every single year is the water and sewer.
$67,000 on water.
Yeah, it's a huge item on the, on the budget.
$67,000.
So this issue is obviously contributing to that. And so it's definitely a money item. It's an item that affects all of us, it's an item that affects your maintenance, you're paying for this. You're, you're all paying for other people's washers. In addition to paying for your-
Right, yes. Just went out and bought really nice washer dryers and we're counting on X amount of revenue from it to maintain it and make it a nice-
Seven to eight thousand dollars monthly on revenue.
So if you're doing your laundry, even if it's, you're doing a little, you're doing one load a week, one load a day for a week, well, that's just lost revenue to the association. So you've got that on top of the water that you're using, which is already bad enough considering how many, for every illegal person here, you're using thirty gallons a day between the toilet, the shower, and the drinking. We got a, we got a problem with water. So, but the bottom line is, when then people comes, well, we didn't do it as grandfathered. Your mom, if you can't come up and show me a documented problem
That's exactly right.
The association giving you permission that you're grandfathered, you're not grandfathered.
Was not written, it does not exist.
It doesn't exist, it's just
A word of mouth.
I have a grandfathered statement. I can prove I'm grandfathered, not for washer dryer, but I'm saying that the point is if you have an, an allowance made to you by the association, if it's not in writing, you don't have it.
Well, it, it wouldn't be by the association because what they're, what they're saying, the ones who say they're grandfathered, saying that they had the washers prior to the association incorporating.
Okay, when was the association incorporated?
1979.
1979. So do you really think that thirty-seven years ago, people had done washers, oh, give your brain.
Anyway, no, we can't move on because we need to decide. What, what, does anybody have a suggestion on this item? Well, the, the real question is, what are we allowed to do? What would the DBPR allow us to do as a condominium to, to enforce the rules? Because it's all about enforcing the condo docs. If it is not allowed, it's not allowed.
No, but if, if the rules are there, we have to enforce them, correct?
So how do we enforce it? I mean, if, if if the DBPR says do X, guess what? You do X.
John, there are many things in the bylaws that say certain things that are not taken care of.
Okay. But, but I think this is a big enough issue that it hasn't been addressed in so long that, that's why I thought it would, is important to discuss and let people know, hey, we're going to start, to start enforcing this particular provision of our docs and rules and regulations because we have it in all these years.
Judge everybody $15 and allow anybody to put one of their water.
I would like to make a motion to enforce the condo docs regarding the washing dryers. Is there a second to that? Do we have a second? You can't, you're not on the board. Any second?
I can only make a motion.
Um. Do we have any second on the board to that, to that motion? Crystal, second is the motion? Uh, now for discussion, okay. So the, the question is, what does enforcement mean? I believe enforcement, social, means that they must remove the washer, right? It's not a question of, well, now they have to pay a certain amount toward, you know, the association to make up for the water that they're spending. Is that a possible interpretation of enforcing? Or, or is enforcement strictly interpreted as meaning, well, I don't know if it's a bylaw issue or if it's, is it a rule and regulation, is it a bylaw?
It's, I don't see it on the, on the rules.
It's somewhere in there, though.
It has to be on the, on the
It must be the bylaws, right?
On the bylaws.
Okay. So the, the question is, do we have any flexibility regarding enforcement? Does it have to be removal or can we impose some kind of a monthly fine or some kind of a monthly fee to make up? To make up?
If it's in the bylaws, it would require a, a majority vote of the membership to modify that, make it okay. So, be that, so that's probably not gonna happen. So that leaves us with, you are in violation of the bylaws. If that's not comfortable for you, maybe International Village is not a good fit for your lifestyle.
Let me ask you a question, if, if-